Off-label being used all the time to help our community. And for our leader, CEO of the hospital, to sit there and say that this is false or incorrect, I think that's disinformation. And we are for the science. This is science. And we are not for misinformation. We are for uncensored information. So I think you will see.
If you don't mind with a request report, we do have one more public comment that was left to us. Would you identify that?
We still have four public comment requests and then we receive the letter.
Yeah, the letter's always in front of you.
So for the record, we receive a letter from Imperial County Medical Society. It was distributed to your board and also an email from Thomas Anderson that was distributed to your board as well.
Thank you very much. Well, it's a bit of a public comment from the board as well. And we'll just agenda before the data, we'll go to the first item. Any items to be voted on, the actual test and consent calendar. And the urgent check is being added. Motion for the approval of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Castillo, signed by Mr. Frank Carte, please vote. Motion approved by you. Other area, motions for the approval of consent calendar. Motion by Mr. Castillo, signed by Mr. Frank Carte, please vote. Mary. Motion for the approval of the official proceeding of December 14, 2021. Motion by Mr. Castillo, signed by Mr. Frank Carte, please vote. All right, Mary. Now we'll move to item number 12. Analysis regarding COVID-19 treatment protocol. Requested by Dr. Free, Dr. Fash. Before we get started, I want to be very clear that this board fully supports COVID vaccination and indoor masking. I think every member of this board is fully vaccinated. But we do know that there are people in our community that believe in vaccinating or masking. But we want to make sure that every available option is available, made available for all citizens of Imperial County, regardless of what you believe in. And this is informational item only, a real discussion, this will not be a debate. Would the President, your finished making the presentation, you will immediately proceed to item 15 of the action calendar. And after that, thank you, gentlemen, for appearing. And now you decide who will vote first. And we'll give to this, Dr. Free. I guess you have been assigned one of the responsibilities.
Thank you.
But again, I appreciate your cooperation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, while we're getting ready, I would like to make a I would like to make a statement in regards to a letter received from the medical society. And I understand and appreciate their point of view. But this is an opportunity. There is not just one train of thought. And information needs to be shared. And Dr. Free, Dr. Tyson, for example, with those that have been trying to find a way outside of what's been shared with us through the CDC and CDPH. And I am aware of multiple people that have testified to me that they've had a positive experience with their treatment protocols. And so I disagree with the medical society and in their Their letter is trying to shut down conversation and have more conversation. My wife, I explained to her what was happening last night. She gave me a very, what I thought was prophetic, that regardless of what side of the political spectrum you are on, left or right, it's either a foot kicking you or stepping on you. So I am very hopeful to hear every side of any opportunity. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I admire your passion. I say clearly that we should know there's no absorption by the court supervisor. Every medical has freedom to choose whatever device they want to go to, any hospital they want to go to, any doctor they want to go to. But I like this, I think that every bit of the information that we can make affordable to the entire community, that's our purpose. It's kind of like newspapers, they print it whether they like it or not. But I think this is an opportunity that should be shared. And I haven't said that until Dr. Free.
Thank you very much, Supervisors and all the people in attendance. Thank you, Ryan Kelly. We appreciate your openness. That's what we needed. We've cried out for about two years. Can you all hear me? I'm a little muffled with this mask. Am I speaking?
You feel comfortable taking that mask off your departmental businesses. So if you're comfortable.
Okay, yeah, I can do that if you don't mind. I'm honored to be here. I'm honored to have my partner and my hero here in the pandemic, Ryan Tyson, who have worked in his urgent care clinic and who have worked at Pioneers clinics throughout the pandemic, who collaborated with Pastor Richard Moore in Holdfield, providing early treatment for indigent individuals and bringing them out of the horrible state of the infection of COVID-19. But I have a few slides. I'd like to present them. Let me just give you a little of my background. I trained at Harvard. I was on the faculty at Harvard and UCLA. I came down here 31 years ago to make a difference and to be a real family doctor. And I never regretted that. And that's been my passion in this pandemic. I never thought I'd be in this pandemic at the age of 77. And I'm not going to stop. But what we saw from the beginning was that there was a need for helping people get through their symptoms at the very beginning and to use safe. And what the last speaker said, the nurse who very eloquently that repurposed medications, off-label use of agents that have been tried around the world and shown beneficial should be used. We, Dr. Tyson and I, agreed upon that right at the beginning. And we didn't want to hurt anyone. We wanted to use what was effective and modified as things went forward and as we learned more. And we've done that. We brought in monoclonal antibodies that are DUA, emergency use authorization. And we'll bring in other agents as they get approved. But our agents, and I'll show you a little bit about them, were right at the beginning effective and had actions that we understand now that would account for their ability to stop the replication of COVID-19. And that's what we'd like our colleagues in the medical society here in the Imperial Valley and around the world, around the country, to know and agree to, at least get the evidence like we have. We, I was honored to be one of three doctors speaking in Washington at the Senate hearing on early treatment about a year ago. And I presented our work with Dr. Tyson and other colleagues here and his staff, of course. And my staff at Pioneers provided a substance that they wanted the Senate and the government and the world to know about. I spoke there. I spoke in January at a reopen California event, about the same work and principles of early treatment. I spoke in Rome at the International COVID Summit in September. And Dr. Tyson has spoken at other international and national COVID summits. And these involve very good doctors. In Rome, it was from doctors all over the world, great doctors. And they applauded what we had done and they agreed with it. In any case, let me just go through the slides. I want to take the time that we need here. It's so great of you to give us this opportunity. We look forward to that. Just the first slide are some points that I have in mind. And I'm just going to say, notice point one, that COVID-19 is only spread when symptoms are present. Number three, natural immunity is robust and durable. And it's probably one and done. It's hard to confirm that a person who was truly infected is secondly, is infected later on. Maybe the Omicron can do that, but I really doubt it. Or their immunity is really strong and I feel very comfortable about my patients who have the infection and got our early treatment in particular and then are now out there in the community. And then the fourth point there on the list is COVID is a treatable illness in high-risk patients with early sequential multidrug therapy. And we've been trying to do something unauthorized. We felt, and the next slide, perhaps I can show these slides myself. Yeah, there. This is a very important slide. It's a slide of the pillars of pandemia. And it's a slide that shows the four aspects of the pandemic response. And these should have gotten very good support. Unfortunately, this decade one there, that is early treatment, didn't get what Dr. Tyson and I, many other very good doctors around the world felt was the adequate support, early treatment, getting great doctors together, putting their minds together, using off-label but FDA-approved medications that are effective antivirals. So that's, those four pillars, people should take note of it. Hospitalization, we've had troubles there. They're doing better now. I was on in Pioneers over the weekend and the COVID patients are still struggling. We need to improve the protocols and other doctors are doing that. But in any case, the fourth is the vaccination, immunization. And vaccination with effective protecting vaccines is what I've almost thought was most important. I have a real graphic slide. I'm not going to go into this in great detail, other than to show we know the pathophysiology of COVID-19 and that viral replication period in the first five to 10 days is where it needs to be struck and suppressed and inhibited. And that's what, we wouldn't have continued with what we did, Dr. Tyson and I, if what we were using wasn't working and wasn't well responded to. But in any case, there is now knowledge of how to deal with the other phases. And the worst one is coagulation, coagulopathy, thrombosis. And that's what kills people. And that's why we add aspirin at the beginning of the treatment. This is just a slide quickly. It just highlights that off-label use is approved by the FDA, approved in our society and of medical societies, that agents and the ones that we use. I'm not going to go into this detox slide. It shows what should have been recognized months ago, eight months ago, 10 months ago. We're part of the paper that is published that shows this algorithm of how you go about treating in a sensible way. And we don't want to be controversial about it. There's nothing there that is to be controversial about, quite frankly. But it outlines exactly what doctors should have adopted and we did adopt that. And we were honored to be authors of that paper in December of 2020. This is just two points about the main medicines or many others. I said monoclonos now since December. We didn't have those, or January of this year. We didn't have those in the first year when we were battling and trying to save lives. We had hydroxychloroquine and it summarized there. There are almost 300 studies that show its efficacy when used properly in the right dosing. It's a very effective agent and we know how it inhibits the coronavirus in many ways. Really quite remarkable. And then this is just sort of overwhelming you, but it shows some molecular studies that show how ivermectin works. It's an interesting, these are interesting molecules. We should have all been, and my colleague should have really tried to look at the information extensively like Dr. Tyson and I have. But that ivermectin docks on the receptor of the COVID-19 ACE2 receptor. So it blocks the actual attachment as one of its mechanisms. Then it goes intracellular and it blocks a protein transporter that transport a message from COVID-19 into the nucleus. Without that, COVID-19 can't replicate properly. So they're known, these agents are not just randomly selected or wished for. They definitely, like other medicines we use in medical practice, have their basis for action on this intracellular level. And they're caught agnostic in that they don't require the virus. They aren't offering the cell so it isn't able to multiply the virus. And that's going to distinguish them from other FDA soon-to-be-approved agents that will be welcomed. But now I just, I want to leave this primarily for Dr. Tyson because it's a historic paper that we're publishing and in a book, actually, that will be on the shelves in January, called Overcoming the COVID Darkness. But in any case, it's actually the statistical study of the thousands of patients that were treated with the early treatment protocol here in the valley. And it's been recognized internationally and there's statistical interesting features to it. I'd like Brian to talk about that. The final slide I have is just a curve that distinguishes benefits for hospitalization, reduction and mortality. And it combines all of these treatments and things that were brought up in that pandemia pillars slide of quarantining, preventing contact if a person is symptomatic, of vaccinations, predicting high-risk population, hospital care and contagion measures. But the top one in yellow is what I stand by, and I know Brian does too. And that is the sequence, multidrug, early treatment, targeted treatment. And we want to continue to get input from everyone around the world as to what is appropriate. Because with these new variants, they have to be particularly Delta, had to be treated more aggressively. And some of them will become resistant to monoclonal antibodies. So it's really a battle that we're all in for. We are honored, I'm honored to be here. It's one of the most important speeches I've ever given. And I'd like to turn it over to Brian. Thank you, Dr. Free. Thank you, Dr. Free. I don't think we may have some questions for you. Ryan, can you make the pitch?
Wonderful. Again, I think it's amazing that you guys are actually entertaining this conversation. I think you're probably the only county board in the United States that's actually willing to have a conversation about early treatment. And I might ask, go off to you guys with this. It's a unique scenario because as a rural community, you would think you wouldn't have the two doctors like myself and Dr. Free here. But like in anything, you know, out from the dust and under the rocks, how come people willing to step up, risk everything? Basically to save people's lives. I put a tweet up that said, never in my life has it been so hard to treat sick people. Okay, we are.
That's okay, Dr. Tyson. Take a deep breath. Take your time. We'll win our use there.
I can do this. It's been really hard, especially with the attacks yesterday, you know. I'm a good doctor. I'm a good person. And it's been, it's been a struggle and fight. So just thank you guys for listening to me. Thank you for allowing me this. I've spent the last 20 months studying COVID-19. My expertise comes from an emergency room and hospital background. I graduated from Loma Linda University with a Bachelor of Science in Emergency Medical Care. I went on to American University of the Caribbean, went to residency at Arrowhead Regional Medical Center, which is a Level 2 trauma center, Sisarmi County Hospital, 580-bed hospital, where we are an unopposed program for family medicine. We didn't have trauma. We didn't have surgery. We did, we ran everything. We ran the MICU, the SIC, the burn unit, the trauma unit, the trauma service, the ER. And I stayed on there and I worked there for about 14 years. I've taken care of severely sick patients. I was there with the initial SARS. I was there with H1N1. I was there with swine flu. I've used ventilators that we don't even have available here in the Imperial County. So I'm not a five-by-night doctor. I'm not a choir. I know what I'm talking about. I've been recognized by the Global COVID Summit as an expert on their panel. I'm an International COVID Task Force expert. I've been summoned by the Superior Court of the Country of Australia for Expert Test One in Early Outpatient Treatment. I would not be in that position if what I was doing or what I was saying was misinformation or not factual. And here, I'm going to explain why. We take a hands-on approach. We personally evaluate everyone. We look at their signs, their symptoms, their contacts, their medical history, medications, allergies, vital signs, chest x-rays when appropriate. And we reevaluate everybody at day three, at day 10, or as needed, depending on the severity of symptoms. We track all of our data on this spreadsheet in our California surveillance site. That's important because all of my data has been sent to the Public Health Department. They get sent every week. And the state of California has actually published articles based on my data. So everything has been verified. Okay? I'm not making up statistics and I need everybody to understand that. What we use? Monoclon antibody infusions, anti-inflammatories, anticoagulants, antivirals, antibiotics, oxygen and steroids. That is the multi-drug approach we're talking about. We're not talking about one drug is a silver bullet. We're not talking about this is a miracle, this is going to work, this always works. Okay? It's not the case. Medicine is not an exact science. Medicine is an art. This is the art. This is, this is, this is my toolbox. For anti-inflammatories, things that you've never heard of, colchicine, phenolphthorine, singular, aspirin. We also use hydroxychloroquine. We follow the data. People say we don't have data. This is the colchicine study. 31% improvement in early outpatient treatment, just using one drug. We don't see this anywhere. Anticoagulants and anti-plaguants, aspirin, epixamana, lobinox. You saw the slide from Dr. Free that says latent disease, one of the biggest problems is blood clotting, both micro and macro embolisms. So if we can prevent blood clots and we can prevent thrombosis, we can improve outcomes. And we've shown that. Here's the aspirin study. 20% improvement, just using aspirin alone. Zinc, one of the vitamins that is, we've all heard about when we get the flu, right? Everybody says take Zycam, right? Zycam, vitamin C and zinc, vitamin C and zinc, vitamin C and zinc. Why? Because it helps. It helps bind the virus and helps prevent replication. If we can get to this virus early, okay, you're going to have better outcomes. Antibiotics, zithromax, it's oxycycline. How many of you guys have had a Z-Pak? Right? How many people have used oxycycline for pneumonia? Well, why? Well, those two antibiotics both have an antiviral and antibacterial properties. When you look at the Henry Ford study, that showed a 46% reduction in mortality when zithromax and hydroxychloroquine were used together. The other thing that nobody's talking about is secondary bacterial pneumonia. We have a PCR machine in our clinic that runs 30 different viral panels as well as five different bacteria. And we also send out a health tract culture that grows out different bacteria. And interesting, what we're seeing is secondary bacterial pneumonia is a lot more common than we're being told. We're seeing strep pneumo, we're seeing moratillia, we're seeing haemophilus. And using antibiotics to prevent secondary bacterial pneumonia, I think is also saving lives. When you look at the Spanish flu, they, the reports for death in those age, in that period, 80% die from secondary pneumonia. 80% of all of those deaths, secondary bacterial pneumonia. So when we see pneumonia on chest x-ray, we do our chest x-rays, we're giving them the antibiotics to prevent that bacterial or to also treat that secondary bacterial pneumonia. Again, improved outcomes. Oxycycline, we use in the elderly population because we've all heard of the QT prolongation or the cardiac problems using hydroxychloroquine combined with zithromax. So we've taken that additional approach and said, well, we can use oxycycline as a substitute and we do that. Oxygen. Oxygen is being underutilized. We found that for whatever reason with COVID-19, those with low pulse oximetry, and that's the little machine that everybody sat on their finger that tells you the percentage, right? Can be tolerated up and all the way down into the mid 80s. And if you give them just so much as two to four liters of home oxygen, you'll get that back up into 90. And as we start treatment using medications, then that, that two to three day window that they need to get better allows them to stay home, okay? And be treated successfully. And we've been able to show that across many different patients and the severity of patients, you'll be surprised that have responded to that. Steroids. Now steroids is part of the NIH guidelines. Dexamethasone is part of the NIH guidelines. However, nebulized budesonide, even though the newest study that came out showed that it is effective, is still not. Everybody knows what asthma is, right? I can make that assumption, everybody knows what asthma is, right? So we know asthma is an inflammatory condition and we treat asthma with steroids. Well, when you see COVID-19 x-rays, you see the same inflammation on x-ray. So we started using dexamethasone injections as well as inhale budesonide, nebulizers, those little machines, okay? And we were seeing three-day turnarounds from white x-rays to normal x-rays when we looked at it. And I know that doesn't mean a whole lot, but basically huge improvements in three days. A couple of cases that came to mind were the 11-year-old twins that just came down with COVID, their chest x-rays were positive, three days later, after inhale budesonide, clear. 37-week pregnant female came in, she got hurt, nebulized budesonide, three days later she went into labor, had no problems, her chest x-ray was clear. It's imperative that we start looking at the root cause of the symptoms and stop labeling this as COVID-19, treatment for COVID-19. It's not a treatment for COVID-19. It's a treatment of everything that we need to treat the symptoms that we're seeing. Okay? The Lancet study is posted here on nebulized budesonide. Everybody's heard of the Lancet, right? That was what got hydroxychloroquine kicked off the market. That study got retracted and nobody told you. Okay? Nobody told you that. So they did a study, they found out that the data was bogus. The study got retracted and the hit piece on hydroxychloroquine had already been out there. The media ran with it, but when the retraction came, the same storm did not follow. So when I talk about misinformation, that was one of the biggest misinformation hit pieces around. And that's fact. Anyone can look that up. So why aren't we talking about this? If early treatment does not work, clearly people will still die. If early treatment does work, how many lives would have been saved? We've treated over 9,000 patients now together. My clinic's well over 7,000, Georgia's over 2,000 at this time. Together, we have very few hospitalizations and no deaths if treatment started before day seven. We have had people die. We have had people in the hospital. But it's the early treatment before day seven, that's the message that needs to get out. But it's the early treatment before day seven, that's the message that needs to get out. The sooner we treat COVID-19, the better. If we wait until the cytokine storm happens, if we wait till blood clots start to form, we're way past that, that ability to treat well. If you get treatment early and you get on your medications, you get your monoclonal antibodies, you get on your anti-inflammatories, you take your vitamins, you, you stay hydrated, okay? You're going to beat this illness. We're not your enemy. We're not. I know this, this, this division of it's this or that. It's not this or that, guys. It's not vaccines and vaccines or early treatment and hydroxychloroquine. It's not. We need to stop looking at the division. And we need to, we need to start, you know, treating sick people and ultimately save their lives. Vaccine breakthrough is real. If you haven't taken notice of that, you simply need to look no further than the N F L. Okay? Ninety-five percent vaccination rate in the N F L, and they have over forty players test positive for COVID-19. Okay? In our clinic, we have more vaccinated positive COVID patients right now than we do unvaccinated COVID patients. Omicron is a four to one vaccinated to unvaccinated ratio right now. And that's, that's data from all over Europe, including the U S. Four to one. You're more likely to get Omicron if you're vaccinated than unvaccinated. Okay? That's data. That's, that's science. So it's not about what works the best or what doesn't work, or this or that. It's everything. Because if you do get sick, what are you going to do? We want the ability to use F D A approved drugs off-label to treat COVID-19 without interference. It's that simple. We need public agencies and pharmacies to quit blocking life to save a man. We need public health officials and elected officials to stand up for our patients' autonomy and choices made between them and their doctors. And we need support to get this information out so that more lives can be saved. It's that simple. Let's use all four pillars of what you saw to treat our community. Use all four, not just two, not just one, all four. Thank you, guys, for your time.
It's a board responsibility to make sure every resource that is available to COVID-19 is available to the entire public. And I sincerely appreciate your willingness to come and share that with us. And before we go any further, I'll ask my board if you have any specific questions for the doctor.
I do too. Can I ask you if I apologize? You just sat down. Could I ask you something? Appreciate it. First of all, I want to thank both of you, Dr. Tyson, we haven't had the pleasure of meeting in person. Dr. Fareed, I've known of you for more than half my life. I was a novice tennis player back in the day, and that's how I heard your claim to fame that you obviously coached and was a medical director for, I believe, our state's cup team that year.
U S State Cup team, yes.
So anyway, highly respected, both of you. But again, I, I, I've known of you for half my adult life.
We've seen each other on the sidelines, it's in the morale.
I was just about to get there. You, you, you won my heart because obviously my alma mater got second place a couple of years ago at the state finals. Unfortunately, they lost. But anyway, you were right there, and I appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Adding to that is this very significant division. Unfortunately, and I'm not going to talk about the money aspect because it's there and it's present, we can't see it, we're blind. Because again, the division is drawn between red and blue very significantly. And that is very sad when we politicize public health. So my question to you, Dr. Fareed specifically, this is an alternative treatment because you said it's off-label. Why is it that given the amicability and respect that you've gained throughout your years? And again, that goes for both of you, but I've known you for a long time, of you for a long time. Why has this not been able to be sold in our medical community as a whole? And a perfect example is the letter we got from the Medical Society which really doesn't support this issue, which again, we're drawing a line in the sand. In your opinion, why is that?
It comes down to how
Your microphone's off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There, okay. Yeah, great question. Comes down to support by agencies, basically, in our system in the United States and then broadening around the world. It looks to these agencies that are establishing guidelines. And if they don't actually treat patients and see what's happening before their, for their own eyes, it, it, it stymies the majority of, of the medical communities around the world, unfortunately. And that's what I've seen. I went to Washington to plead for this to be recognized a year ago. And we, we've known that we had a good approach, and others took that on also. But the short answer is just like Brian was saying, pharmacists will, we call in and write a prescription or electronic, transmit a prescription, and a pharmacist will get back and say, this isn't F D A approved. And I'm not going to get my licenses in jeopardy or something like that. But it had to do with some other factors that you sort of alluded to, but I think that the bottom line is that we, we follow these people that are, we expect to be authorities and they expect to do the right thing, and I don't think they did.
Yeah, let me just, let me just comment on, on, on a couple of things. Number one, monoclonal antibody treatment is recognized by the C D C and the N I H. Still, but still yet, the Public Health Department is still not talking about it. Dexamethasone is recognized as outpatient treatment by both the C D C and the N I H. And that's still not being talked about. So I think the problem is, is the focus is being pushed so much on contagion control and vaccination. Again, the two, the two of the four pillars. And they're missing the two pillars in between, which is early treatment and hospital treatment. I don't even really think they're even looking at hospital treatment very well because when you look at the red escher studies and you look at the renal failure and the liver failure rates using that particular emergency use authorization drug, I think there's some, some, some work to be done even with that treatment alone. But to me, it's, the focus has been on the two things that, that the public health knows well. And their, their, their strengths are policies and guidelines and looking at research. Our strengths are treating patients. And the evaluation and reevaluation is key. What's working, what's not working? You know, I tell my patients all the time, if what we were doing was wrong, my parking lot wouldn't be full every morning. Because I guarantee you, the death rate out here would be a hell of a lot higher if what I was doing was killing people. But if you look at the public health statistics, again, so go look at the data. From March to March, from March twenty twenty to March twenty twenty-one, we have about seven hundred and thirty-five residents pass away from COVID-19. Since April first till now, we've had maybe fifty. It's a huge discrepancy. Why? Because we're using lots of different things. Vaccines, monoclonal antibody, and a lot of people are showing up at my place and Dr. Fareed's place. I don't, I'm not taking all the credit for that. I think it's a combination of all of these things that is allowing more people to survive COVID-19 now than when we first started. Again, the line in the sand is being drawn by people who don't treat COVID-19 patients. Dr. Fauci is notorious for discounting treatments that work in, in, in place of things that make him money. And you don't have to look any further than the AIDS epidemic in the nineteen eighties. And George was around for that, right? With the bathroom?
Yes, exactly. It was suppressed by Dr. Fauci.
Right. So it's no, it's no different, and the track record speaks for itself. But when people who don't take care of patients are making decisions for those who do, that's, to me, that's the number one problem.
I've got a couple more questions. My second question is going to lead to what you just mentioned. Then my first question, or my, in this case, my second question. Do you foresee a change in public policy related to the treatment of COVID-19 in the state of twelve-month period? I'm, I'm asking you to look at our crystal ball. Because again, you unfortunately are on the outside looking in. Let's be, let's be realistic. You're on the outside looking in from a medical perspective.
Yeah.
The science doesn't necessarily accept what you're doing. The off-label usage of some of your medications are not widely accepted. So I'm asking you point blank, do you think this will change within a twelve-month period? And the reason why I ask that crazy question is because we're going to be in this cycle again in twelve months. Why? Come on, we're not, I mean, I'm talking to two experts here. We're going to have the same influence of COVID-19 issue twelve months from now because it's going to be an ongoing issue. So the more medication we have available to treat our people, our community, the better off we're going to be. So looking at crystal ball, would you foresee your specific treatment that is currently on the outside looking in across the United States and across the world, would it be more acceptable and potentially even F D A approved in a twelve-month period?
I, I would answer yes. And I'm, I'm, I am an optimist. Brian was saying we bring in many components together. And we want to all work together with the four pillars uniformly acting. Not just, we're, we're not, not eliminating, eliminating or not using the early treatment one that we feel so committed to. But I, I'm, now that F D A will be approving some antivirals for this, it's going to bring into recognition that these medicines that, that will be beneficial to be used. But it's, it, there will be an education that's required where doctors who appreciate how other viral illnesses are treated like H I V. I've run the whole H I V program in the Imperial Valley for twenty-one years that, or more, actually. And that's an illness that you treat with multiple agents. You don't use just one agent or one approach that is, Brian was saying. And so we've learned greatly and have a great deal of respect for what are, what I call these agnostic agents. They're like this H C Q ivermectin, fluboxamine is another one. And that had an R C T randomized control trial for supporting it as an anti-COVID agent. But they, you want to use a multi-faceted treatment with other approved agents. So we'll, we'll be in a much better state in the, in the months ahead. We should be there immediately, we should have been there by now. But which is my ending point to your, to your question is that I, I do envision things to open up and get more acceptance of even the use of these off-label agents that are really quite remarkable. And remember, they're agnostics, they're not actually going to get resistance by the virus, which is a good thing.
Yeah, so interesting, I had a phone call and a conversation with the Florida Surgeon General, Jill Lodeppo, this morning, actually. And what Florida's doing with early treatment centers across the state of Florida is, is something very unique. And came from the model that we and George put together with putting in a tent basically outside the parking lot when we started treating this. I do think that the focus is going to definitely need to be on early treatment. Again, what we're seeing, and, and I think everybody in this room can see it for themselves, it's not just me telling you. Vaccines are failing, they're, they're breaking through. Okay? People are still getting infected. Both my in-laws caught COVID last week, both fully vaccinated with the booster. So it's, it's not if or when, it's going to be how. You know, people are going to suffer from getting COVID. Now, the, the severity of symptoms, right? We want lower severity, we want early treatment, we want everybody to get through it. That's the goal. And I think using things like aspirin, monoclonal antibodies, steroids, zinc, even, even just those four things can show significant improvement in outcomes. And I think that's the conversation is, is starting to be more widely accepted. With our National Global COVID Alliance, we're having seminars all over the nation. And I've had a chance to go speak in Ocala, Florida, we're going to have one here in San Diego in March, where we bring in experts. And you hear from people like Paul Alexander, the former H H S director. You hear from people like Peter McCullough, who's been the highest, highest published cardiologist in the nation. And Robert Malone, who invented the M R N A technology. We're in that group. I talk to these guys every week. It's not like we're getting data from some backyard or even just my own clinic. We're pulling data, we're looking at analysis, Tess Laurie, for example. I mean, she, she, she did the, the piece on looking at vaccine data and safety. And she's widely recognized. And I had a conversation with her last week. So if you understand where we're coming from and we, we pull our resources together, we use everything available, there's no doubt in my mind that this county can be leading the nation in COVID treatment. When we first did our piece on our, on our paper, the mortality rate for the Imperial County was three times higher than all of the other surrounding counties. That was a massive failure on our part. Now, we're down to less than one percent, which means we're going in the right direction. And we need to continue to go in the right direction, understanding what we're telling you, which is right now, breakthrough infections is the most important aspect to, to go after. Let's not wait until it's too late. Let's go after it now, let's get a plan together, let's work together, let's use every tool that we have in the toolbox, and, and let's beat COVID.
Anything else to add, Mark? You mentioned the AIDS epidemic. I watched this, I was in college in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five. I watched this movie named End of Land, and the band played on. It's a biopic on the eighties. Eighties stars, unfortunately, I'm dating myself on this one. Matthew Modang, Billy Humble, Alan Oliver, who was basically maybe a French doctor who basically stopped the process for multiple months, if not years. But anyway, it's basically a biopic on how government, red and blue, screwed up advancements in the AIDS treatment process. The other interesting movie, I'm not a book guy, I'm more of a movie guy, I apologize, is Dallas Buyers Club. I don't know how Matthew McConaughey lost eight pounds to get that role, but anyway, he did it. And it targets the alternative treatment for AIDS when A C T was a popular treatment option, and A C T was always poisonous in other areas. So maybe they'll make a movie about Dr. Tyson and Dr. Fareed. It's a challenge for, for, for for medical professionals, especially in California, which is such a litigious, litigious state, for you guys to try to do things in a manner that supports the population. I completely agree with you that we need to work together. I also want to defend our Public Health Department here in the county of Imperial. They've busted their butt for the past twenty months, receiving little to no fanfare for what they've done. And obviously, they are very much frozen in what they can and cannot support based on who they are, what they do, and who they receive orders from. So in that regard, I also want to make it very, very clear that I fully support and understand where our county public health stands on some of these issues. And again, they don't have the flexibility that maybe some of us do when talking about this. The answer is very, very strict and I know the public is very frustrated at some of that, but you need to understand where they come from and why they're doing it. Because they need to protect our public health and they are really, really handheld, that what they can officially and not officially say it and officially not.
Not only that, but I do know that they are understaffed too, and they've been understaffed this whole, this whole time.
Entire county's understaffed. That's a whole separate matter.
I mean, I get it. And, and, and that's why I said, I mean, you know, I've been working with the Public Health Department since the beginning. And that's why I say, I mean, we were a surveillance site for them. We give them our data. We give them our spreadsheets. We, we, we help them out. We do, you know, COVID swabs for them and they send it up so they can look at the variants and track the variants. We've done everything the Public Health Department has asked us to do. Everything. Never, never once told them no. So, again, trying to work with them, absolutely. We work with them. We know them over there. They're not the problem. The problem is we, we can't solely focus on one pillar or another pillar. We have to focus on all four. We need to work together on all four of those pillars. That's, that's, that's the message today.
You know, yesterday, I was pinned against the wall several times from individuals and associates to pull this item from the agenda. After that, I stood my ground after whatever. The most important question in the most important direction to go is why do not Dr. Tyson, Dr. Freed come up with an avenue of approach to deal with every other unbelieving physician in the county, come together as a whole, go on in the same direction together? Can that be done?
I mean, it can, but it, it takes, it takes the willingness to have a conversation. You know, the Medical Society sent that letter to you. And you know how many members of the Medical Society have stepped into my clinic? Zero. Before sending you that letter, did I get a phone call? No. Did they even want to know what I was going to talk about? No. Again, a lot of people are making assumptions and pinning you against the wall or pinning me up against the wall, saying what you're doing is wrong. We, we know it's wrong. You don't know it's wrong because you have, you're not in my shoes.
But that'd be a way that we can get the physicians of the rural county together and get on the same page and no more lines in the sand. Let's just pave a road to the, to our ultimate goal.
Yeah, let's have a conversation.
Mr. Ryan Kelly, you have a question?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments. So, I, this is an example of American spirit, trying to find a problem or trying to come to solutions to a problem, right?
Yes.
And that should be, that should be the example and not the outlier. If you could answer this, FDA-approved off-intent intended use, you have, as a board-certified physician, the ability to do that for your patient. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's right.
And I would promote the idea that supervisor ESOPR sits on the local health authority. And I'm not sure if we need to go in this route, but there are treatment protocols that you have established. And I know other physicians are doing it and not being vocal about it. But what about doing a clinical trial in Imperial County with your protocol funded by the local health authority?
I, I, that's terrific. I'm in favor of that. We found though, from the beginning and in the twenty-twenty in particular, even now, we, we, it's hard to set up a randomized controlled placebo-controlled trial for us personally when we have some safe agents that are working. So, we, we don't want to deprive people from the agent one to do a trial where one is comparing different components and thus giving all the people the, the chance to recover early. And so, that's, that's the way we could do. We should do.
My concern too about a control group of those that wouldn't be able to
No, we would never want to do that.
I'm sure I'll leave it to you and Dr. Tyson. There are other models.
Yeah, I mean, you can look at, you can, you can, the health authority can actually do a retrospective study. They can look at all of the patients that we treated. They can go through their demographics and, and history and, and put together a compilation of, of data going back and looking at all the charts and seeing what the outcomes are based on what they got. That's typically how studies are done during a pandemic. Because again, the ethics behind a randomized control trial where one person doesn't get treatment, the other one does. You go back to the Tuskegee experiment and giving, you know, patients a placebo for syphilis and not treating them and then having those, those outcomes be detrimental. So, I mean, you don't want to withhold life-saving sustaining treatment, but certainly you can, you can look at that and you can do a comparative analysis to those who didn't get treatment. Those who ended up in the hospital, those who are, are not getting treatment in, in other clinics. And you can, you can look at those patients who didn't get treatment. And there, there are many ways to design it. But I think, I think the most important thing is, there's, there's plenty of studies out there right now. Ivermectin has over three hundred and two studies. Hydroxychloroquine's got many studies. I showed you the Colchicine study. I showed you the Phenofibryte study. I showed you the aspirin study. I showed you the zinc study. So, people are doing the studies. The question is, is, you know, and, and the pushback that I get a lot is when I, when I try to direct them to a site or I try to direct somebody to a site and say, "Hey, if you go to c19early.com, you can look up all of the drugs that we're using in COVID-19. You can click on the drug and underneath that, you'll see all of the citations of the, the studies done." And the, the first thing they tell me is, "That's not a government site." Okay, well, if you're going to wait for the government to put up a study and a, and a site, well, you're looking at five to ten years. Okay? That's, that's not, that's not an acceptable answer. If you want to know the truth, then let's sit down and let's, let's have a conversation. If, if you don't want to know the truth, then that's, then that's, that's the pushback you're going to get. But, but I'm fine doing whatever. Like I said, I, I mean, the Public Health Department, they know me. They're in my clinic. They've been there. They see what we do. And, and they're happy. I know they're happy with what we do. I know my patients out here are happy with what we do. How do we get the message out, though? Health authority would be great. It would be great because again, let's combine all four pillars of the pandemic. I don't know how hard that is to do. Let's do all four. Can we do all four?
Are there any more questions from this board? If not, Dr. Tyson, Dr. Freed, thank you so very much for the information you've provided to this community today. And we hope that we all get through this healthy, alive, and live to see brighter and better days. Thank you again. I haven't said that. The board will take five or three sessions. We can make some other next quick ones.
Thank you very much.